Sorry for the delay. I'd say the slight delay, but the significant delay. I'd like to call to order the August ninth, two thousand twenty-one meeting in Plymouth Township Council. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, is there any public comment on the agenda this evening? Then we'll move on to our first item tonight is a Plymouth Fire Company recognition, and we're going to hand that over to Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certificate of recognition, whereas Plymouth Fire Company Number One has faithfully protected Plymouth Township and its surrounding communities since nineteen oh six. And whereas on Wednesday, June the ninth, two thousand twenty-one, heavy rainfall storms impacted the area, causing quick and severe roadway flooding. And whereas Plymouth Fire Company Number One was dispatched to twelve fifty Concha Hocken Road under the railroad bridge for a water rescue of an occupant trapped in a vehicle with water up to the windows and rising rapidly to engulf the entire car. And whereas the following, it says individuals, I prefer to say heroes, from Plymouth Fire Company Number One, Concha Hocken Fire Department, Marine and Rescue Forty-three and Marine Fifty-five worked swiftly and effectively in rescuing the trapped occupant. Plymouth Fire Company Number One, Charles Gallagher, Mark O'Neil, Stephen Korwoski, Concha Hocken Fire Company, David Murphy, Drew Ingbertson, Marine Forty-three, John Papalitzkas, Matthew Kajak, and Rescue Forty-three, Andrew Thomas, Stephen Vonomo, Mark Montilius, Marine Fifty-five, Tim Gunning, Daniel Costello, Chris Dixon, Steve Young, Gary Davis, and Mike Yingling. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council publicly commends these individuals for working quickly and selflessly for the successful rescue of a trapped occupant from flooding waters, and sincerely thanks them as well as all members of Plymouth Fire Company Number One, Concha Hocken Fire Company, Marine and Rescue Forty-three, and Marine Fifty-five for their dedication and noble commitment to the residents of Plymouth Township and beyond. And this is adopted this ninth day of August, two thousand twenty-one, Plymouth Township Council. Christopher G. Menero, Council Chairman.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that as the daughter of a firefighter and the sister of a firefighter, I know the selflessness that's involved. And the fact that you just moved so quickly and rescued the person. I hope if I'm ever in the same situation, that I'm here in Plymouth Township where I can count on heroes like you to rescue me. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to extend this certificate of recognition.
Thank you. Ms. Bandish, there's a motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Additional comments or questions from council?
I just want to echo what Councilwoman Bandish said. I can't imagine how you were feeling to see those waters rising and knowing that it was your actions that a life depended upon. You do that a lot, but you really are heroes to act that quickly and keep your wits about you and save human life. Thank you.
We run away from that stuff and they run into it.
Exactly.
It's just amazing to think about it. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Just an announcement that an executive session was held tonight. And at this time, we move on to the approval of minutes from our workshop meeting on July sixth and our regular meeting on July twelfth. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Still moved.
Motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council from the audience? Do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Approval of departmental reports and bills. Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Motion from Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to administration, we have a records disposition resolution. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution, whereas by virtue of Resolution Number nineteen ninety-one dash fifty-three adopted November eleventh, nineteen ninety-one, Plymouth Township declared its intent to follow the procedures for the disposition of records and set forth in the retention and disposition schedule for records of Pennsylvania municipalities issued on May seventeenth, nineteen eighty-two. And whereas in accordance with Act four twenty-eight on nineteen sixty-eight, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council, in accordance with the above cited schedule, hereby authorizes the disposition of the following public records. Police Department investigative files, training videos, background investigations, ninety-one boxes. Code enforcement, Public Works, Fire Marshal, time cards, permits, fire reports, one hundred and fifteen boxes. Total two hundred and six boxes, adopted this ninth day of August, two thousand twenty-one. I make a motion to approve the resolution.
A motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. An announcement, a sure sign that the summer is coming to an end, sorry to say. It's time to think about our budget meetings. So our two thousand twenty-two budget meetings we'd like to announce will be held as follows. Monday, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six o'clock P.M., that is a public workshop meeting. Monday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P.M., that also is a public workshop. And Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six o'clock P.M., that will be a public meeting as well as an executive session. October council meetings are scheduled for the fifth and the eleventh. And November council meetings are scheduled for the third, sorry, the fifth, and October is Tuesday. They are scheduled for the third of November, which is a Wednesday, and the eighth. And a reminder that general election day is Tuesday, November second. Moving down to police and public safety. Chief, anything for tonight?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer, we have our six-month extension for our recycling contract, and that will go to Ms. Bramblett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This contract is a consortium of six townships every six months. So although I'll be reading Township of Upper Dublin, it's something that the Township of Plymouth will be signing on to. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners, council people of Upper Dublin Township, authorizing the extension of the agreement for recycling services with J.P. Mascaro and Sons dated October twenty-two, two thousand fifteen, for an additional period of six months with certain prior changes to certain services. Whereas the Township of Upper Dublin, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, the township executed an agreement for recycling services, the agreement with J.P. Mascaro and Sons dated October twenty-two, two thousand fifteen, for a term of three years, with township options to renew for up to an additional two years. And whereas the township exercised both renewal options to extend and renew the agreement, which renewal term expired on or about November twenty, two thousand twenty. And whereas in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and to avoid an interruption in service, the township extended the agreement for two additional six-month periods. And whereas it is in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare of the township and its residents to enter into an additional addendum to the agreement for recycling services with J.P. Mascaro and Sons dated October twenty-two, two thousand fifteen, in order to extend the term of that agreement for an additional six-month period, subject to a change in the fixed processing price as shown on the attached Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Upper Dublin Township that the Township of Upper Dublin is hereby authorized to enter into an addendum to the agreement for recycling services with J.P. Mascaro and Sons dated October twenty-two, two thousand fifteen, in order to extend the term of that agreement for an additional six-month period. Subject to a change in the fixed processing price as shown on attached Exhibit A, resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Upper Dublin Township. This, they did it the thirteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-one. And it is signed by the township manager and president of their Board of Commissioners. And the attached exhibit includes the the signatures of all of the participating townships, including Plymouth Township. And I make a motion that we adopt this six-month extension and sign on to the addendum.
Thank you. Ms. Bramblett, there's a motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council and from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Engineering, Mr. Manai, anything tonight?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Moving down to subdivision and land development plans that are currently under review. The first one is for Connaughtelli Auto Group, nine oh six Ridge Pike. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Dominic Connaughtelli in reference to the Connaughtelli Auto Group, nine oh six Ridge Pike. They're requesting a six-month extension to review their land development plan. And that is until February twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Can I make a motion? Will we approve this?
Motion from Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council and from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is twenty seventy Butler Pike. Ms. Bandish?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a communication from Craig R. Lewis representing in reference to a land development application of Kelman and Muggly or Erality. They're asking for an extension to act on the application of including October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. I make a motion that we approve this.
A motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council and from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is for twelve thirty-four Butler Pike, Tellarium LLC. And Ms. Gallagher, that one is yours.
Great. So there is a resolution for this matter this evening. The resolution reads, be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council, the township, does hereby approve the preliminary final land development plan titled Proposed Site Plan, prepared for Tellarium LLC, herein after called owner developer, prepared by OTM LLC of Wildomissing, Pennsylvania, dated February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, last revised May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, consisting of sheets numbers one through five, also known as the plans. Proposing the subdivision of attractive land having an address of one, two, three, four Butler Pike and having a parcel number of forty-nine, zero, 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 one, five, four, zero, 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 four, the property. Land development application number twenty-one dash two into two residential lots to demolish an existing two-story residential dwelling, garage, and frame deck, and to construct two eight-hundred-square-foot dwelling units, one on each of the two subdivided lots, along with associated driveways and decks and sidewalk improvements in accordance with said plans, under and subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner developer shall execute a public improvement agreement and memorandum of public improvement agreement as required by the subdivision and land development ordinance, and pay all applicable fees and assessments, including but not limited to the following. A, impact fee for transportation capital improvements under ordinance number fourteen twenty-six, or two thousand four, as amended, in the amount of one thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents as set forth in the Carroll Engineering Corporation Traffic Review Letter dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. B, sewer connection fee in accordance with the connection fee and EDU schedule in effect at the time of application for connection and payment. C, recreation fee in the amount of one thousand dollars based on one new proposed dwelling unit. D, sanitary and storm sewer outfall fee of seven hundred and forty-eight dollars based on the new impervious coverage. Two, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans as set forth in the June tenth, two thousand twenty-one Report of McCluskey and Faber, P.C., the Township Landscape Architect, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of the Township Landscape Architect. Three, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements, comments as set forth in the June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one Report of Carroll Engineering Corporation. The Township Traffic Engineer attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the said traffic engineer. Four, that the owner developer shall prepare revised plans to comply with the requirements, comments as set forth in the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Report of Carroll Engineering Corporation. The Township Sanitary Sewer Engineer attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the said sanitary sewer engineer. Five, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the July eighth, two thousand twenty-one Report of Woodrow and Associates. The Township Engineer attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of the said township engineer. Six, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the April eighth, two thousand twenty-one Report of David P. Conroy, zoning officer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the said zoning officer. That the, seven, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements, comments set forth in the March eighteenth, twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one Report of Suburban Lighting Consultants, the Township Lighting Consultants, to the satisfaction and approval of the said consultant. Eight, that the owner developer shall obtain all required permits and approvals from the sewer authority, a DEP sewage facility planning module waiver, the Water Company with jurisdiction over the property, and a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT if needed, and a highway occupancy permit from Montgomery County if needed. Nine, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to comply with the requirements and comments set forth in the August fourth, two thousand twenty-one Report of the Plymouth Township Planning Agency and the May fourth, two thousand twenty-one Report of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, each attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the aforementioned township zoning officer. Ten, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plans to list all waivers granted and notes required by this resolution. Eleven, prior to the issuance of any permits, all outstanding legal, engineering, and administrative fees applicable to this land development must be paid by the owner developer. Twelve, this approval is subject to the fulfillment of all the foregoing conditions in their entirety, and no permit shall be issued nor should any development take place on the property unless and until all such conditions are fulfilled. Further resolved, that the owner developer shall be granted the following waivers from the terms of the Plymouth Township subdivision and land development ordinance of nineteen eighty as amended, and from the Plymouth Township zoning ordinance of March sixteenth, nineteen sixty, Ordinance three forty-two as amended. A, Article five, Section five oh two dot C dot, I'm sorry, five oh two dot two dot C, to permit the use of depressed concrete curb ramps in lieu of providing five-feet radii at the driveway entrances. B, Article five, Section five eighteen dot five dot B, from the shrub component of the softening buffer requirements duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the ninth day of August, two thousand twenty-one. And then council will just need to decide on those two waivers.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, is there a motion to approve this resolution with the two waivers granted?
Can I make a motion?
Motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to twenty-six twenty-two Butler Pike, an extension. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a letter from Edward Hughes, Esquire. Please accept this letter as a grant of an extension of time within which the council should act on a referenced subdivision of land development application. The extension is granted until or before November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. I make a motion to approve the extension.
A motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And that, moving down to conditionally approved projects that are not yet reported. We have an extension request for the Wawa parking lot. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Julie L. Von Spreckelson in reference to Wawa at thirteen hundred and thirteen forty-four, I guess that should be East Ridge Pike. They're asking for an extension until October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. I make a recommendation that we approve this.
A motion from Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Projects currently under construction. We have three escrow leases tonight. First one is for eleven oh three to eleven thirteen Ridge Pike. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Lonnie Manai of Woodrow and Associates in reference to eleven oh three and eleven thirteen Ridge Pike, and this is their third escrow release. At this time, based on field observations, work completed to date, find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of two million, two thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to three million, five hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. I make a motion that we approve this.
A motion from Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins. Comments or questions from council and from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is one thirty-four Plymouth Road. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thirty-four Plymouth Road, a letter from Lonnie Manai of Woodrow and Associates. At this time, based on field observations of work completed to date, we find that sufficient work has been completed to release the total balance in escrow in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to an amount of zero. I make a motion to approve this escrow release.
A motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council and from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And final item under escrow releases is for one hundred Lee Drive. Ms. Bandish?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a letter from Lonnie Manai. At this time, based on field observations of work completed to date, we find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to zero dollars. I make a motion that we approve this.
A motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council or from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Down to our zoning announcements. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township will hold a public meeting, a public hearing on Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, commencing at seven P.M. in the Plymouth Township Building. Seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, on the following applications. PMDI Signs Incorporated on an application for special exception from Plymouth Township Ordinance Number forty-two as amended, Article sixteen, Section sixteen oh two dot one dot D. The special exception requested is as follows. To allow a one hundred sixty-eight point four square foot sign of identification where a maximum of one hundred square feet is allowed. This property is at six hundred West Germantown Pike in a planned office park zoning district. Next zoning hearing is Eric G. Flaxman, Craig Flaxman, Brian Flaxman, and Karen L. Poe on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Code Number three forty-two as amended at Article seven, Section seven hundred, seven oh two dot F and seven oh two dot G. The variance requested as follows. To enlarge the parking area by seven thousand eight hundred forty-three square feet to allow fifty-four point three percent impervious coverage where a maximum of thirty-five percent is allowed. To allow forty-five point seven green space where a minimum of sixty-five percent is required. This property is located at one oh seven Ridge Pike in the C residential and commercial zoning districts. Next is Charles and Andrea Swan on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number three four two as amended, Article seven, Section seven oh two dot F and seven oh two dot G, and Article nineteen, Section nineteen ten dot F dot two. The variances requested are as follows. To allow thirty-eight percent impervious coverage where a maximum of thirty-five percent is allowed. To allow sixty-two percent green space where a minimum of sixty-five percent is required. And to allow a swimming pool side yard setback of five feet where a minimum of ten feet is required. The property is located at twenty-one oh one Sierra Road in a C residential zoning district. Next is Phyllis M. Mandrak on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number three four two as amended, Article nineteen, Section nineteen oh nine dot E. The variance requested is as follow. To allow a fence within a front yard setback. The property is located at eight twenty-seven Plymouth Road in a B residential zoning district. And finally, Mary Ann S. Pietro Coop on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance Number three four two as amended, Article nineteen, Section nineteen oh eight dot G dot one. The variance requested is as follows. To allow a detached garage closer than ten feet from the rearmost portion of the house, two feet from side property line where a minimum of four feet is required. The property is located at seven twenty-five Rental Road in a B residential zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or interested party may attend the public hearing and have an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Moving down to planning and development for our campus renovation. We have a notice of intent tonight to award a bid, and I guess I just want to make sure I say this correctly. Do I need to, um, do I need to read this memo or just announce that we're going to? I'm sorry, that's not, that's not, there is no memo. There is no memo.
You should name the, the name and the price. He should, he should name the, the name and the price.
Oh, boy. Really put me to the test here tonight. So tonight, we are going to announce our intent to award bids for our campus renovation project. The first one is for general construction. This is our general construction bid. And it, the bid is to, I'm sorry.
The green one, right?
Oh, these are all separate? I got you, I got you, okay. So the first one is for a bid for our general construction to LJ Payola Construction Incorporated. And that, all of these bids that we will make motions on tonight are subject to?
Are subject to the, to reserving the township's right to reject the bids during the 30-day contract review period if in the best interest of the township.
Okay, got that. So is there a motion to approve the bid to, or to award the bid to LJ Payola Construction Incorporated? For $7.9 million.
I make a motion.
Motion for Mr. Higgins. Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council? Mr. Manai?
No, I'm sorry. I was stretching my hands.
I thought maybe for once you had a question.
Go, go and award it, please.
Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. The next bid is for plumbing construction. And this bid is to Myco Mechanical Incorporated for a total of $886,000. And I would ask if there is a motion to award this bid?
Still moved.
Motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council, from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. The next bid is for mechanical construction to Myco Mechanical Incorporated. And this is a bid for $3,118,000. And is there a motion to award this bid?
Still moved.
Motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
I second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council, from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And the final bid is for electrical, electrical construction. And this is a bid by US Solutions for $2,579,000. Is there a motion to approve this bid, to award this bid?
I make a motion.
Motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council, and from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor.
And just to clarify for the minutes, all of those, those are notices of intent to award, and they're all subject to the 30-day contract review period at the beginning.
Thank you. Moving down to miscellaneous and old business citizen board vacancy announcements. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All residents wishing to serve on these citizens boards are asked to submit their resume or letter stating their interest to the Township Manager, 700 Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA 19462, or by way of email, kwayce@plimmetouship.org. The following citizen board positions are open. Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board, three positions open. Historical Architectural Review Board. Environmental Advisory Board. Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Is there any comments or questions tonight from the audience? Seeing none? Any additional comments or questions from council? Meeting adjourned.